Well, good morning, everyone. Today is February 3, 2020. The council briefing of Seattle City Council will come to order. It is 9:32. I'm Teresa Mosqueta. I am serving as pro tem president for today. And I'm joined by my council colleagues, Councilmember Shama Swant, Councilmember Andrew Lewis, Councilmember Alex Peterson, Councilmember Tammy Morales. And I really apologize because I have not yet been here for council briefing, and so I haven't had the chance to rattle that off the tongue. But it's really great to see all of you. This is my first day after about three and a half months of paternity leave or parental leave. And just want to say a huge thank you to my staff, who've been holding down the fort and working with all of you in the 2020 session, and also the previous council when we did the budget and the transactions prior to budget. So a huge amount of appreciation for them. And again, welcome to 2020. And I look forward to working with all of you guys. And sorry, was not able to be at many of your swearing ins, but looking forward very much to serving with you. Councilmember Peterson, I will remember this. From now on, I am on the hook. So before we get started here with our updates from each of the council members, we do have our friends from the Office of Internal Government Relations, OIR, with us. And would love to have you introduce yourselves and maybe give us an update from the council agenda for the 2020 session. Before we do that, I would like to approve the minutes that we have. Is there -- I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Any other comments? It's been moved in second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Great. The minutes have been approved. Let's go ahead and have you guys introduce yourselves and then do an overview of the 2020 legislative session.
Thank you, Council President Mosqueta, council members. Lilly Wilson Codega, Director of the Office of Intergovernmental Relations.
Robin Kosky, State Relations Director at the Office of Intergovernmental Relations, as well as the Office of Housing.
Quinn Majeski, State Relations Associate at OIR and Government Relations and Policy Analyst at SDOT.
And I'm Cheryl Swab, Deputy Director of OIR.
And this week, we are heading into the fourth week of the short 60-day legislative session, which is scheduled to end on March 12. And we are also quickly approaching the House of Origin policy cutoff coming up here on February 7. Last week, there was significant activity, I know many of you are aware of, around progressive revenue with the introduction of Representative Macri's progressive revenue proposal, House Bill 2907, allowing King County to impose an excise tax on large employers to fund housing, behavioral health, and homelessness support services. The bill exempts small business. It is expected to generate around $121 million a year and will be heard in House Finance this Tuesday at 8:00 a.m. In other significant news, we saw the death penalty bill pass the Senate 28 to 18 on the 31st, and automated enforcement passed the House 56 to 40 on the 30th, which Quinn will cover in more detail when we review the transportation section later on in today's briefing. I will now turn it over to Cheryl, beginning with the education section on the top of page one.
Good morning. I'm just going to do a quick overview of the bills that I mentioned, that I talked about last week, and add a couple of things to that. So on the comprehensive sexual health education bill passed the Senate last week, the House bill is now scheduled for executive action today. And the bill that would require schools to provide free tampons and other menstrual products for students, this bill's not yet been scheduled for executive action. Quickly, I wanted to mention two early learning bills, the Fair Start for Kids Act and the Early Care and Education Act. Both have been passed out of their respective policy committees. Both bills propose large-scale expansions to childcare, preschool, family support systems, dual-language learning, and workforce development. The House bill has been identified as the vehicle for legislation this session, while the Senate bill is intended to set a roadmap for long-term early learning investments. Neither bill identifies a funding source for these expansions yet, but a proposed funding source for the House bill is anticipated later in the session.
Thank you, Cheryl. And moving on to the environment, Quinn?
A few updates in the environmental arena. First, the low-carbon fuel standard, which requires transportation fuels to reduce the carbon intensity by 10% by 2028 and 20% by 2035, passed the House by a 52 to 44 margin on January 30. There were no amendments. It is expected to have some challenges in the Senate, but we're continuing to press forward on that. One new bill that I do want to flag, the title is just greenhouse gas emissions, but this is known as the authority bill down in Olympia. This piece of legislation follows a January 16 Supreme Court decision, the Washington State Supreme Court, which ruled that the Department of Ecology overstepped its regulatory authority in regulating indirect or mobile sources of emissions. This legislation would, in essence, restore that statutory authority so that they can continue those regulations following that ruling. This is an emerging priority for the environmental community and one that we expect may actually have some momentum, so continuing to work closely on that. And then finally, want to flag the heating oil insurance bill that we have some concerns about. On the House side, it did include some language that we were looking for around providing the Department of -- or the Pollution Liability Insurance Agency with the ability to support low-income homeowners. The Senate did not, so we're going to continue working on that end to make sure that that language is included.
Thank you, Quinn. And moving to general government on the bottom of page two.
So the digital equity bill had executive action taken in the House on January 31, and it looks like it will be moving. The facial recognition bill was introduced on January 27, had a hearing on January 31, and is scheduled for executive action on February 4. And the anticipated data privacy legislation continues to see movement this session, passed out of its policy committee and is now in the fiscal committee. It had a January 30 public hearing in Ways and Means, not scheduled for executive action at this time. Companion bill is scheduled for executive action in its policy committee on February 5.
And moving on to healthcare, Robin?
So the governor's request legislation around vaping is moving forward. This is a bill that expands on increasing the age to purchase vaping products to 21 that went into effect at the start of this year. It bans flavored vaping products and also ones with vitamin E acetate in them. It limits nicotine concentrates, and it also requires manufacturers and distributors to list products and ingredients and submit them to the Department of Health. This is scheduled for an executive session this afternoon at 1:30. I don't think that the House bill has been scheduled for any executive action yet. I also just wanted to highlight a couple of other bills that are not on your sheet that our contract lobbyists in Olympia pointed out to us. One is by Representative Macri. It's House Bill 1697, and it offers expanded health coverage for undocumented young adults. It is meant to make sure that people with -- are able to access insurance between the ages of 19 and 26 if they have an undocumented status, so that they would still be able to get medical coverage. And then there's another bill.
Just pause real quick on that one. It's always sad when we hear about bills that we've worked on 10 years ago that are still in the mix. This is one that I worked on about five years ago. So you mentioned it's not on our list. I assume that it is now on our list.
It is now, yes, yes. It's just not on the -- I mean, we're tracking it. It's just not part of the council briefing, so we'll just make sure that it gets in there for next week.
But you sign in pro for our legislative agenda.
Yes, absolutely. And then there's also a bill on dental therapy, which is House Bill 1317 by Codi, and that authorizes dental therapists to practice statewide. It would basically just expand access to coverage around the state. And this has also been a multi-year effort, and so we're hoping that it does get some traction this year and actually pass.
There is, if I may, there is one more bill on healthcare, and I'm trying to find the number for you. It relates to making sure that individuals can have access to healthcare after they deliver a child. There is currently, I believe, a two-month window where individuals are allowed to keep their health coverage. And if they then do not have healthcare, they are not eligible to keep their healthcare. So I'm trying to find the bill number for you. I can send it as a follow-up, but this would allow individuals to keep their health coverage, I think, at least for up to a year postpartum.
And I believe that our contract lobbyists are also tracking that one, so I'll make sure that we put this on the list as well.
Thank you.
And now I guess I'll move on to housing and homelessness. Today is actually Housing and Homelessness Advocacy Day. And Councilmember Morales, you're wearing the color of Housing and Homelessness Advocacy Day. I'm sure that was intentional. There will be, I think, you know, it's usually 600 to 700 people who show up in Olympia to advocate for bills that support housing and homelessness. So I will be heading down there. I know there are some Office of Housing staff that are there to learn about what's being advocated for in Olympia. And people generally from around the state will also be there, so it's very exciting. One thing I didn't mention last week about the governor's budget was that he had a significant proposal to expand the Housing and Essential Needs and the Aged, Blind, and Disabled Program. That also was taken out of the Rainy Day Fund, which I think everyone is sort of in agreement that there won't be the momentum to get the votes to use the money in the Rainy Day Fund. But the Washington Long Income Housing Alliance also has a budget proposal around trying to make sure that there's a little bit of an expansion to those two programs. And so I think that, you know, there's a possibility that there may be action on that, and I just wanted to let you know that we're watching that as a budget item around housing and homelessness. There are several bills, there are so many housing bills, it's sort of unbelievable. It certainly points to what a priority this is for legislators in Olympia, because even in a short 60-day session, there are, you know, you see, this spans almost three pages in your update. So I won't go through bill by bill, and we'll certainly offer to follow up with you if you have questions on particular bills. But there are three bills that do things that we already have most of the authority to do in Seattle, which are just cause eviction. And then there's a Housing Justice Act bill that would prohibit landlords from using criminal records, that Senator Darniel is supporting in the Senate, Senate Bill 6490. And then there's also an installment payment bill, which is the first bill on your list, House Bill 1694. And those are all moving forward and still very active in Olympia.
Comments or questions, Councilmember Swant?
Thank you, President Mosqueta. I'm not sure if I missed you talking about House Bill 2907, I know you mentioned in the beginning. If I might ask you some questions about that?
Sure.
Can you go over the, sort of, the outlines of this bill just very quickly? I know it authorizes counties with populations over 2 million to pass taxes, but specifically, what I would like to hear from you right now is, what was the conversation like when this was put forward? And I believe, I wasn't here last Monday because I was out of town, but if you did do a briefing, or did OIR do a briefing, and if this was mentioned at that time or not? Because I know as far as my office is concerned, we heard it only when we heard it in the press. And so I'm really concerned that, if, I would be concerned if this wasn't brought to the council in the briefings, the first chance that you got. And so if you could just explain that. And then also, am I right, just again, in terms of the outlines of this and what's been announced by the county? This bill does not make the tax at the county level happen. It just gives the authority to the county to do the tax. And if the county were to pass a tax, apparent, from what I've understood, is the proposal that's being put forward, if this state bill passes, then what the county would be intending to do would basically effectively raise 40 million for Seattle, which I think is pitiful. I'm sorry, just given the scale of the crisis. And so I would like you to comment on what the discussion has been from elected officials, both at the county and the state level, and also what the mayor's thinking is on this. I mean, just to point out, just to make it very clear, this is even less than the bill that was passed and then was repealed by the majority of the council in 2018. And, you know, Councilmember Mosqueta and I voted against the repeal. But that, to me, is extremely concerning at a time when even the McKinsey report, which is not a socialist report, it's a report from the, really, you know, from the Chamber and big business, and even they are very frankly saying the crisis is so bad that it would require raising anywhere from 400 million to a billion every year. That's how bad the crisis is. So it seems like this is just sort of tone deaf to the crisis. So that, and then the other question is, what's the conversation on any state ban? Because I imagine big businesses are, big businesses supporting this only on the condition that that is included, a ban on cities passing a big business tax.
Thank you, Councilmember Swant. I'm going to go ahead and start. So as you know, this is part of a broad conversation, and the beginning of that conversation, the legislation had not been introduced at the time of our last council briefing, so it has since then been introduced, which is why we're briefing you on it today, and we will continue to keep the council updated as things develop. At this stage, there is no preemption in the legislation, and that is something, given the council's prioritization of progressive revenue, a conversation we definitely want to be at the table for and continue to stay engaged in. You know, the amount that the proposal would raise, I think, is 121 million as the estimate currently. And I'm going to have Robin fill in any parameters I may be missing there, but we hear your concerns, understand that very clearly, and we'll continue to keep everyone updated as this proposal moves forward through the legislative process.
I think I would just add on the broad parameters of the legislation, that it's a payroll tax on earners that make above $150,000 per year, and the focus of what the revenue would be used for is housing, homelessness, behavioral health, and public safety. But the public safety portion is not really meant for law enforcement, it's meant for services, so that people who are engaged with the public safety system could have access to services.
I just want to chime in. I think Councilmember Swant's points are well taken. I'm also sorry that I was not able to have a conversation prior to this bill being introduced as well, but I do have a lot of trust in Representative Macri, and I know that she has heard the concerns loud and clear from folks who have been calling for additional housing. And I know that she also is well aware that $100 million or 120 million in the county is not sufficient. 40 million coming to the city of Seattle would be a drop in the bucket. We were looking at 48 million with the scaled-down version of the hours tax. So I appreciate the scale of the problem that Councilmember Swant has outlined, and I also understand that we, as a city, do need to look at partnership with our county cities, with the governance of King County. And in doing so, we would want to make sure that it's a both and, that we can layer any additional services that we would need, and that we also are not only looking at shelter services. I think everybody at this table has talked a lot about the scale of the problem really requiring an investment in housing long term. So I appreciate that there's some other elements on your agenda here that look at tenant protections, which we've been working on for a long time, and also scaling up housing. I do want to underscore the point, though, around preemption. Having any bill that takes away tools at the city on the cusp of a potential recession, it'd be problematic. And as the now Chair of Finance and Budget, I believe we have a serious conversation that we need to continue to uphold about how we allow for cities to have tools in their toolkit. We may need dollars at some point to raise for apprenticeship programs, or childcare programs, or, you know, small business support. Who knows what that might be? But when we have tools in our toolkit, that doesn't mean that they are up for grabs when there is another proposal on the table. And we do appreciate the, I think, the county folks wanting to potentially step in, but there's a lot of unknowns there. So just as you continue your conversation in Olympia, thank you for recognizing that the city, in my perspective, I'll speak for myself, that city council members as the legislative branch, this is a legislative tool that we have, that we would need to continue to be updated about any conversation, because a conversation about removing this tool seems very dangerous, especially when we are responsible for a very complex budget and with a potential recession on the horizon. The concept of giving away a tool at the city level is something we have fought year after year. Our friends at the AWC fight preemption all the time. So having a conversation that involves a city-level tool requires an engagement with city council members, and I know many of you have already been engaged in having that discussion. Councilmember Strauss was just down there, I understand, last week. So I just want to underscore your points. I think they're very well taken and an important part of the dialogue in Olympia. Councilmember Swant?
Thank you. I really appreciate you sort of joining in that point about how we want the county tax and we want tools at the city level. And I think it should be underscored from the city to the state legislature, that this is how Seattle got in this in the first place. I mean, Seattle has the nation's most regressive tax system because the state has really strangulated our ability to raise progressive revenues. And so this is, any talk towards a state ban on cities passing their own big business taxes, or in other words, preemption, the reason I'm saying state ban is that preemption doesn't, as a word, is not clear to a lot of people who are not engaged very deeply in city and state politics. I think that would go in the wrong direction, and I would be curious if you can report any public statements made by progressive Democrats about holding the line on state ban. I would be curious to hear that. And it's, and I would also like to note that the reason this is, you know, this is happening so fast really has to do with how much momentum there is among the public to actually address this problem. And I agree that the balance of the solutions has to be towards providing affordable housing and strengthening tenants' rights, because preventing homelessness in the first place is the best solution really to end homelessness. Thank you.
And thank you, Council. Just to respond, in terms of the press around public statements from elected officials, we're happy to aggregate any of the news that we have been, that we have access to and send that your way. I think there have been a lot of generalities at this point in terms of legislators saying we are beginning this conversation.
Right. And just to underscore why I'm focusing so much on this is that, one, just instinctively, I mean, you'd be naive in politics to think, not know that this is what the real price that big business wants out of this. They're not going to, they've fought tooth and nail against any tax on them, and the only reason they would, they would agree to something like this would be if they can get the real price, which is a ban on cities doing it, basically Seattle doing this. But the reason I'm focusing on this is because also publicly, the Downtown Seattle Association has already issued a letter in which they are making it very clear what they really want from this is exactly this, which is cities like Seattle not being able to pass their own taxes.
Thank you.
Councilmembers, any other comments or questions on either this item, which is a big issue, or the other components of the legislative agenda? Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you. Interested in hearing more about the exemptions for small businesses that you stated at the beginning of the briefing.
Yes, I do believe there will be some small business support, as I understand it. At the hearing on Tuesday, it exempts businesses under 50 employees, and I believe is embraced by the small business community. But, you know, I should actually retract that before I actually confirm that there's an official position, although others on my team may have a little more.
Follow-up?
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Lewis?
Right, so this is more, I think, a procedural question about potential advocacy for the bill, or what the city's official position on the bill is at this point. You know, speaking purely for myself at this point, the bill in its current form is something I very enthusiastically support. You know, it's a progressive tax assessed on a county-wide basis. It currently does not have a preemption provision. I think that that's a great policy. It's something that we can definitely build on. It's something I would like to see enacted and implemented. My position and opinion on this bill could certainly evolve throughout the give and take of the legislative session. So I guess my question is whether we're currently in a position where the city's posture is to advocate to maintain the bill in its current form, and how the office will work to represent the council and the executive as this bill goes forward to convey potential differing opinions based on how it does evolve in Olympia. I'm just flagging that now, just since it is a short session, we might not have that many additional briefings between now and significant movement on this bill. And I haven't really canvassed my colleagues yet to sort of see what all of us are generally thinking, but that's my first question, is sort of more procedural.
And I'll take that question. So I think we are strongest in Olympia, particularly around priorities that are the significant, things like progressive revenue and other major priorities for the council, and we have a unified position at the city level. So that is something that we will work very, very hard to make sure that everyone on council, everyone's concerns are addressed. This is something that is moving very quickly right now, and we will continue to keep you all updated individually as we hear concerns back from you. At this stage, I have not heard from anyone that they do not support the proposal in the current form, so our plan is to sign in pro on this legislation on Tuesday. If things change, in the meantime, we're in constant communication with you all around those changes and what the city's position will be. So we'll make sure to keep everyone engaged as this process moves forward.
May I extrapolate just a little bit? I think that the point is also well taken, and it does sound like you were articulating, expressing to legislators there that there is significant concern around preemption or, you know, a ban. And that's been, that's been expressed as well as it relates to individual council members. Is that a fair addition to signing pro?
Yes, and I believe Councilmember Strauss also echoed those concerns around preemption when he was in Olympia with us last week, I believe. Great question. Councilmember Morales?
Well, you sort of answered my question, which is, I want to just make it clear from my perspective, that this bill, I think, doesn't go far enough. As Councilmember Swant said, we know that we have huge needs, and so I'm interested in learning a little bit more about what, you know, how we could layer on top of what this could generate. $40 million is a fraction of what we need to address our crisis in the city, particularly over an extended period of time. And I want to make it really clear that I am a hard pass on exemption, I'm sorry, on preemption. I think it's really important that, as a city, we have every tool available to us to address the needs in the city, particularly for the folks who are most vulnerable and who are at risk of getting pushed out of the city. And that means that we need to be able to raise the revenue in a progressive way to fund the many, many needs we have in the city. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
We'll be in constant communication, I'm sure.
Absolutely. Thank you for hearing these concerns and questions. Any other questions? Yes, Councilmember Lewis?
Yeah, I have one about a different bill, 5946, Senator Wynn's CEPA bill on shelters and encampments. And just wondering kind of what the prospect for that bill is looking like now that we're kind of in the center of the session. I know it got fairly close last session. And it just, it's just, it's an important consideration in our conversations internally about the transitional encampment ordinance that we're currently considering as a council, since it has some implications for that. So I was just wondering if anyone might have an update on how that bill is looking and making its way through the process this year, if there's any, if there's any update on it.
Well, it did pass the Senate, which is good news. And I know that it continues to be a priority for Senator Wynn and a priority for our Department of Construction and Inspections. And it is in the House Environment and Energy Committee right now. I don't know if it's been scheduled for a hearing. I'm guessing that it might take a little while, because since it's already passed one house, it's not subject to the cutoffs right now. But I can certainly keep you updated on the progress of that bill.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely. And if there, go ahead, Director Wilson Codega.
I was going to just say, if there were no other questions, I'd move on to public safety, but there are clearly other questions.
You haven't gone through the full list of bills. I'm sorry. I opened up the questions to the full list of bills. We do have two more hands. Do you mind if we take those?
Absolutely, of course.
And they may filter into that. Go ahead, Councilmember Strauss.
They're just general comments.
Go ahead.
I can wait till the end. Mine are just general. It was just to say, you know, I had a really very good time in Olympia last week. Thank you to all of your staffing and your speaking points on the red light, don't block the box bill.
Thank you for your help.
Oh, absolutely. And it was a really great experience being at the Association of Washington Cities Board. We missed you, Councilmember Mosqueta. I'm sure we'll be looking forward to seeing you there again. And in every single one of the conversations at AWC, local control was emphasized. And so that was just a ringing talking point in my, in my mind all day. So just wanted to say thank you for all of your support in Olympia. I felt very well supported, and your expertise was very on point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well said. And thank you for being down there on behalf of the city council as well. Councilmember Swant, and then we'll turn it over to Wilson Codega for wrapping this up.
Thank you, President Mosqueta. I was wondering if, under the general government, we have Senator Wynn's Bill 6280 on facial recognition services? If you could just give a quick summary on what the bill is considering and what government agencies would be under the purview of this bill?
So I'll take a stab at that. So the bill actually applies to businesses rather than government agencies. It's any business located in Washington or targeting Washington consumers. I'm doing this right, aren't I? Okay, just, you looked worried. You looked worried. That controls or processes personal data of 100,000 consumers or more, as well as businesses that control the data of 25, more than 25,000 consumers or derive more than 50% of their revenue from the sale of personal data. So it, a similar measure passed the Senate last year before dying in the House. The bill seeks to provide regulation of facial recognition technology through judicial oversight, transparency measures, and community engagement. The bills are supported by Microsoft, ACLU, and legal communities have concerns.
Just very quickly, if, wondering if OIR could give--
ACLU and the legal communities have concerns. Sorry, did not mean to say that we're supporting. They're not supporting.
Okay. They have concerns. Yeah, so in relation to that, if OIR could at some point give us a summary of what those concerns are. And also, it's quite stunning to hear that there are actually all these businesses that are making money off selling it. I mean, we kind of know that that's going on, but it would be good to know what corporations we are talking about, like if you give some examples, because obviously that is the motivation behind this bill.
We can happily compile that for you and send that to your office.
Without further ado, would you like to go through another section of your--
Thank you so much. I'll be brief, given I know the time is short. Just some highlights in the public safety section, beginning on page six. We continue to see momentum around the council's gun responsibility priorities, including the governor and attorney general request legislation to ban assault weapons, high-capacity magazines, an effort resulting from last year's study bill to centralize Washington's background check system, the Drew Hansen proposal, as well as an effort to repeal the statute preempting local jurisdictions from regulating firearms. This week, we have also included an update in your report on Senator Dingra's felony DUI firearm restriction bill. And Senate Bill 6163, towards the bottom of page six, which passed Senate law and justice last week. And another Dingra proposal to establish the Office of Firearms Prevention, which I know is an important issue to Councilmember Morales. Senate Bill 6288, listed on the top of page seven, also passed out of committee and has been referred to Ways and Means. And then moving quickly over to under Safety Net and Civil Rights on page seven, a policy modeled on Council President Mosqueta's Domestic Workers' Bill of Rights, House Bill 2511, is scheduled for executive session in House Labor on Tuesday. And several voter access bills have introduced, been introduced, including Senate Bill 6313 on the top of page eight, which would allow 17-year-olds the ability to vote in the primary if they will turn 18 by the general election. And one we have--
I'm excited about that.
Thank you. And one we have not listed in your report today, but will include next week, that we did want to highlight for you, Senate Bill 6228 would restore voting rights to those with felony convictions, serving out their community custody. And unless there are any questions, I will turn it over to Quinn, who will cover transportation on page eight.
I do have one comment on the domestic workers' bill. Thank you for underscoring the, this bill in our legislative agenda. And I want to reiterate why it's so important that we have this at the state level beyond the important protections for domestic workers like minimum wage, rest breaks, protection from retaliation, which we did at the city. Many people told us that they needed workers' compensation, unemployment insurance, healthcare, retirement assistance. These are things that would be very hard to do at the city level. So we talk about like local control. You would never really want to have a city-based workers' comp system or a city-based insurance pool, right? Those benefit from a much larger statewide approach. So as it relates to sick leave and workers' comp and unemployment insurance and healthcare for these workers, we really did have to defer those priorities to a state-level conversation. So I am very hopeful that this will continue to get legs this session because this is the missing element to really fulfilling the requests of many of the domestic workers who worked hand in glove with us and the business community who came forward and supported having more protections for domestic workers. And when I say business community, that's folks like Seattle Nanny Network and other organizations that work directly with domestic workers, because they say, you know, this is, in many times, a gray market because they can't bring folks out of the, out of the fold, and many people are being treated poorly. They wanted to have better standards for these workers so people stop undercutting legitimate businesses. We appreciate those folks who worked with us last year, but in order to fulfill what those workers were asking for, a statewide solution is really needed. So thank you for including that. And I just wanted to talk about how that fits in with what we did at the city level and where we couldn't do everything we wanted to do at the city level, the state really can step in and help us out here.
Thank you, Council President Mosqueta. And moving on to Quinn Majeski, who will cover some very good news around the city's automated enforcement legislation.
Yes. So there, we did have a positive week last week on automated enforcement of blocking the box in transit lanes. On Tuesday, there was a hearing in the Senate. And thank you to Councilmember Strauss for coming down and testifying on that. We also had Chief Scoggins from the Seattle Fire Department and Captain O'Donnell from SPD. They put together a wonderful panel, and we were joined by a number of advocates from the stakeholder community, Transportation Choices Coalition, Rooted in Rights, and others. Overall, a very positive hearing, and a number of legislators have commented that they, some of their concerns about the legislation have been assuaged. So that was, that was good. And then on Thursday, the House version passed out of the House, 56 to 40. We are hearing that the House version, since it has passed, is going to be the vehicle. And we, so we expect that Senate action will resume after that hearing in a couple of weeks once House of Origin cutoffs have passed. And then one other piece of legislation to flag that was just introduced after last week's council briefing. Senator Leas has introduced a piece of legislation around Sound Transit and their valuation of car tabs. To provide a few details, it would transition from the current 1996 car tab valuation schedule to the 2006 valuation schedule. Sound Transit has stated publicly that this would reduce their expected revenue by $1 billion. If they bonded to address some of the short-term implications of losing that revenue, the overall cost over their capital improvement program plan would be about $2.93 billion. It does, the legislation also addresses a portion of Initiative 976 specifically. Initiative 976 repealed Sound Transit's 1.1% motor vehicle excise tax and dropped that to the 0.3% rate. This would restore that 1.1%, which does mean that it would require a 2/3 vote of the legislature because it's an amending initiative that passed within two years. It does seem that the Senate Republicans are not supportive, and so it's unclear at this point if it will have the momentum to gain 2/3 vote. But we are nonetheless monitoring it very closely, given the potential impacts to Sound Transit and light rail expansion within the city.
Great.
Yeah. And when the House bill comes back to the Senate, I would be happy to come down and testify again. So please--
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I know that sometimes scheduling occurs at the last minute because the pace is very fast in Olympia, so please just feel free to keep my office involved.
Much appreciated.
Thank you so much.
I do have one last question, and this is going back, Mr. Majeski, to the low-carbon-fuel standard vote--
Sure.
--that was 5244. I wonder, I mean, so that number implies to me that some Democrats in the legislature voted against it. I wonder if there was, well, first off, how many Democrats passed, crossed over the line, if any Republicans voted for it, and if there was a geographic kind of breakdown of where the Democrats that didn't support it represent, and what lessons that might indicate for the chances in the Senate.
Sure. The current makeup of the House of Representatives is 57 to 40, which means five Democrats switched over and voted no with the majority of Republicans, or I should say unanimous backing of Republicans. I don't know the geographic distribution. I would, I believe they represent more outlying rural areas, but I can find those who voted that way and provide that report to you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Any additional questions or comments for our legislative team? Okay.
Thank you so much.
Comments, closing comments? No? Okay. Well, we know you're headed down there today. Thanks again for hearing us out on these various bills. And I think Councilmember Lewis, this point is really well taken. We know that these bills are a point in time, so thank you for continuing to keep us updated because the slightest word change or the addition of one word can change our position dramatically. So we appreciate you continuing to keep us engaged, and thank you for all of your work down there. I know it's fast-paced and a short session. Good to see all of you again.
Welcome back.
And we'll see you next week.
You're welcome back.
Okay. Well, we are five minutes ahead of schedule. Let's go ahead and continue on with a preview of today's council and then an update from all of you. The preview of today's council is that we have a few items on the agenda. Resolution reaffirming Seattle as a welcoming city. Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. From the Sustainability in Renters' Rights Committee, an ordinance relating to the termination of residential rental tenancies, prohibiting evictions and, sorry--
Tenancies.
Tenancies? Okay. Thank you. Preventing evictions during the winter months. Thank you, Councilmember Swant. And from Public Safety and Human Services Committee, five appointments to the Seattle Fire Code Advisory Board. I will leave it to the council members in charge of each of those to give us a little bit more information if they like. Also, just want to recognize that our first Finance, Housing, and Labor Committee is this Thursday, February 6. We have an appointment of the City Employees Retirement System Board of Administrations, the SIRS Board, and also a discussion about the Employee Transit and Benefits District. We also may have an update on the future of work, so more information coming about that. Lastly, I want to thank folks who really did help our office out. I mentioned our incredible team, who, over the last three and a half months, have really held down the fort. I also want to thank each of you and our office and your offices for working with our team, the communications team, the clerks team as well, central staff. Thanks to folks in the executive who continue to work with our office as well. It was really an amazing time to be able to be with my newborn, and I just was in communication with her dad. She is, this is her first day out there, the two of them together, and I wish him the best of luck on his paternal leave as well. And it was a great, great opportunity, and I just want to thank all of you for making that possible. Lastly, I did have a chance with our daughter Camila to go to two rallies last week, and I want to continue to send our notes of solidarity to the workers at SEIU 1199 Healthcare Northwest, who are continuing to engage in negotiation and demand that their bargain be met with the folks at Swedish and Providence. And were unfortunately, as many of you know, turned away at the door when they went back last week. So we are sending a message of solidarity today as they wrap up their negotiations, hopefully, and they hear the city as we stood in solidarity with them in downtown last week. Also, I had the chance to join many of the workers at UFCW 21, who will work at the Macy's retail store downtown. Some of you may know Macy's is closing its doors downtown, and unfortunately, the folks who are downtown are getting offered a different severance package than those in the North End and the South End, less retirement benefit, I mean, sorry, less severance benefits and less overall compensation. And, you know, recognizing we represent one of the most expensive places to live in the state and the hardest places to find housing, hoping that those negotiations continue and end up in a good place, and really hoping that our friends step up and show what it means. We know businesses close their doors off and on, people open their doors off and on, hoping that this is a good example for other retail businesses. When transition does happen, how we keep those workers whole. So thanks to those unions and workers and the small businesses who stood with those workers as well, and look forward to working with all of you. That's my update. Councilmember Swant?
Thank you, President Mosqueta, and welcome back.
Thank you.
I wanted to echo your point about the healthcare workers at SEIU 1199, who are conducting a valiant struggle. It was incredible how much community support there was for their picket lines. You know, in some cases, there are multiple pickets. In some cases, they actually had 1,000, 1,000 people estimated at one picket. And so it was really incredible, and I wanted to thank my, all my staff and also members of Socialist Alternative, who are there at the picket lines with the healthcare workers, and also thank you for sharing the Macy's workers' concerns as well. There is one item on today's city council agenda from the Sustainability in Renters' Rights Committee. That's the ordinance that you mentioned, President Mosqueta, on banning winter evictions. The winter eviction legislation prevents renters, tenants, from being turned out of their apartments during the cold winter months. The legislation does not prevent all evictions, but it does stop people who are behind on their rent from being forced onto the streets during the coldest and wettest part of the year. And we saw the study sponsored by the Women's Commission, Losing Home, showed that predominantly, like overwhelmingly, the people who are unable to pay their rent fall short by very small amounts, and they are overwhelmingly black women-led households, people of color-led households, and very low-income people. So clearly, this is in line with every aspect of social justice we might think of in the city as far as housing is concerned. Last November, the Seattle Renters Commission passed a recommendation to the city council to put forward this legislation. It would be the first of its kind in the U.S., although some kinds of protections in the winter months are in place in some other cities and states. But this proposal that was brought forward by the Renters Commission is modeled after something that has been existence, in existence for seven decades in France. So it will be quite, quite an innovative thing that we would be doing. My office introduced the first version of that legislation last December. And then on January 23, at the Sustainability in Renters' Rights Committee meeting, we had a very engaged discussion on an amended version of the legislation that I put forward in December. The amended version incorporates a lot of the feedback we heard from tenant rights advocates and also small landlords. At that meeting, Councilmember Lewis, you indicated that you would like to look into mitigation funding to possibly prepare an amendment. Thank you for being in touch with Jonathan Rosenbloom from my office about that, and I understand that it's ready for today, but I will let you say more about that. There were also questions raised about how the just cause evictions ordinance, and therefore this winter evictions ban ordinance, because it's sort of modeled after the just cause ordinance, would impact people on fixed-term leases. I believe the question has now been answered for all council offices. In short, there is a loophole at the end of fixed-term leases, at the point that they're set to renew. There's a loophole in the just cause eviction ordinance, and we've been aware of it. And my office has actually, to be honest with you, has been in conversations with the city attorney's office for more than a couple of years now in wanting to close this loophole, but they've had some concerns, so we've sort of deferred to that. But I feel like it's now time to address that. But other than, but that's something that we should do separately from a just cause to sort of bring forward a full-fledged just cause evictions ordinance that we do plan to do from my office, but that would be a separate ordinance. But other than that, all renters are covered by just cause, and therefore, all renters would be covered by this bill as well because it's modeled after just cause. There's also a question about what mitigation funding exists, both for tenants and for landlords. My personal view is that landlords should not have mitigation funding because really, if we provide mitigation funding to landlord, to the tenant, then both the landlord gets paid and the tenant gets the, gets to maintain the housing. So I feel like it has to be motivated from the tenants and not the landlords. However, that question has also been answered. As far as I understand, Sochi Makevich from Washington Community Action Network has emailed the council last week with information about the state mitigation funds already in existence for landlords and about the mitigation funds for tenants, particularly through the home base program. I would, of course, support increasing funding for the home base program and, and also looking for ways to help more tenants know that this is an option, and I think that is a significant barrier. Tenants simply don't know, and when they find out, it's too late for them, and the eviction proceedings are already underway. So I think that is one place where the council can do a lot of, have a lot of impact with the departments really doing much better outreach to the tenants, letting them know that this exists. As far as my office understands, at this point, we have now seen and addressed every question and amendment that has been brought forward to our knowledge. And because Councilmember Lewis was working on an amendment, we delayed the bill when it came to the city council for one week, so it's now on today's city council agenda rather than last week. But I understand some council members would still like more time, and, and I appreciate that. So I've agreed to support holding the bill for another week to February 20. But I would really urge all council members who have any further concerns aside from the ones that have been addressed or have ideas for amendments, if you could please reach out to my office as soon as possible so that we can get this underway.
Councilmember Swant, just to double check--
Yeah.
--the bill that you're going to potentially move, wait to move to next week, can you repeat that bill?
Yes, that's the bill, that's the second on today's agenda--
Council Bill 119726. 119726, just for the viewing audience. So thank you for that transparency, and I know folks are still working on amendments. If you do want to comment on any amendments you're working on, that's wonderful. Otherwise, thank you for your office's openness to working with others on potential amendments, and I'm looking forward to having that discussion.
Absolutely. I had one more item unrelated to this. Would you like me to wait before other--
Let me pause real quick. Is there any other comments on that bill? It just sounds like there's been some great dialogue, and folks are going to continue working on possible amendments.
I can give a brief update on my amendment when I give my overall.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Lewis.
Comments?
Councilmember Swant, please continue.
Thank you. Also, on today's city council agenda, which is the first item on our agenda, Resolution 31926, which is the resolution my office has produced opposing what is called the National Register of Citizens and the Citizenship Amendment Act in India. In combination, these two policies are extremely discriminatory and actually quite dangerous. In combination, these two policies are extremely discriminatory and actually quite dangerous. They threaten to strip literally not only the 200 million Muslims who live in India, but also hundreds of millions of other marginalized people, including LGBTQ people, especially trans people are very vulnerable to this. Women are vulnerable to this. Oppressed castes are vulnerable. Stripping all of these hundreds of millions of people of their Indian citizenship and the democratic rights that come alongside being a citizen. So, this is extremely disturbing, and they're very, very reminiscent of the early Nuremberg laws of 1930s Third Reich Germany. And so, it is crucial that the global community that is fighting against the right wing take a stand on this. I'm sure my staff have informed you all that there are also resolutions in the European Union that are being considered. So, we are in good company alongside the United Nations and the Amnesty International, who have both been very clear that these laws are going to be extremely detrimental to democratic rights, and this is the biggest democracy of the world. So, that, that we should, that we should be taking a position against this, and it's not something removed from Seattle and the United States. You know, Seattle has been very clear about its position against Trump's Islamophobia, attacks on immigrant rights, especially the horrendous detention camps of the U.S.-Mexico border. So, I believe that this resolution is very much consistent with our position against Trump's agenda, and conversely, if we didn't pass this resolution, it would, it would really bring up the question of what, how exactly we are against Trump, because if we're against the right wing, then we have to be against the right wing everywhere. And just to share with you, API Chaya, the Kadima Reconstructionist Jewish Community, and the City of Seattle LGBTQ Commission are among the many organizations that have issued formal statements in support of the resolution. And I'm happy to give more information, but I'll reserve further comments for city council.
Thank you. And I apologize, because I think I misread notes from last week and missed the opportunity to vote on the welcoming city one. So, sorry about the confusion there for our viewing audience as well, and thank you for the clarification on what the resolution was. Any other comments? Okay. Thank you, Councilmembers Swant. Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you, Madam President Protam. So, my comments this week are fairly brief. First, there are no items on today's council meeting this afternoon from the Homelessness Strategies and Neighborhoods Committee. Just as a reminder, though, speaking of that committee, we will have a special meeting on February 10th, after a full council, a week from today, to consider amendments and have a vote on Councilmember Swant's transitional encampment ordinance. So, again, would just ask my colleagues for the, for the benefit of central staff to get any potential amendments on that ordinance to them early this week, to give them the time to, to prepare everything so we're ready to have an efficient conversation on that encampment ordinance.
Councilmember Lewis, I really appreciate that request. Do you have a hard deadline that you'd want to note for folks? You said early this week. Is there a certain end of the business tomorrow?
I mean, I would appreciate by Wednesday, probably.
Wednesday? Okay. Let's say Wednesday at 10:30?
Sure. And fortunately, I know that from my conversations with central staff, folks have been very efficient in, in getting things to, to Kittle Freeman to, to start working on. So, it does sound like my constant reminders have been effective in that respect. But we had a really good conversation on that, on that ordinance during the committee meeting last month. So, I do anticipate that everyone should be fully prepared on February 10th, after a full council, to talk about that ordinance. It's the only thing that's going to be on the agenda for the special committee meeting. So, echoing Councilmember Mosquita's comments, and Councilmember Swant as well, I did have the opportunity to go walk in solidarity with SEIU 1199 last week. It was really powerful to see the turnout there, and, you know, I do hope that that action will, will help the bargaining position, though I was similarly disheartened to see some of the responses when folks were trying to return to work. You know, I, someone who, who grew up with a mom who was a working nurse at Harborview, it's always very powerful to see SEIU 1199 in action, and a lot of what has been instructive for my success is the benefits that my mom had from her work of being able to be a representative nurse. So, really appreciated watching all that sacrifice last week. I'll continue to stand in solidarity with them. I hope that they are ultimately successful. I also had the opportunity to take a walk with the new community service officers in the International District last week. It was really good to talk to them, hear their backgrounds of where they're coming from, from Mary's Place, from DESC, from places where they have worked with folks who are experiencing homelessness and transitioning out of homelessness. They're going to be an excellent addition and an excellent resource to our mission around having more public health and more community-based interventions in the public safety space, and making sure our officers have access to folks with that kind of training and that kind of expertise. So, I'm really excited to see them later this month, when they're actively on the streets, helping folks out, and it was really good to see them, see them in action last Friday as a sort of a trial run, all ready to go. This week, the only other big thing on the agenda for me is we're going to have our first office hours in the district, in District 7. I sent out a itinerary, an agenda of all of the office hours for February and March that my office is going to be holding. They're available on the website. Encourage anyone in District 7 watching at home on the Seattle Channel. Please feel free to go to my website. It's really easy to sign up for an office hour slot in the district. We're going to have multiple locations. It's starting this week on February 8th, but there's plenty of opportunities throughout February and March in all of the neighborhoods of District 7. Queen Anne Magnolia, Downtown Belltown, Pioneer Square. We really wanted to make sure that we were making ourselves available where folks are instead of forcing folks to come to us. So, really excited to get that started and really hope to see folks out there to hear how we can be a more effective partner in government for all the people of District 7.
Excellent. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Wait. Mitigation Fund Amendment. Sorry. Apologize. So, just echoing Councilmember Swant's comments, and it's been great working with Jonathan in your office, as well as Councilmember Swant, in putting this together. I just want to be clear in some of the comments that we've gotten from other council offices, this, the idea would be to create a new fund that would be in addition to existing rental assistance resources, not in place of or to move things around. You know, sort of by design, based on how the winter eviction ordinance has been written as a defense in an eviction proceeding. If, if more traditional mitigation funds had been obtained, the eviction proceeding probably wouldn't be proceeding in the first place under the, the just causes that are allowed. So, it's sort of, it's sort of written in any way that it would be supplemental to existing sources of support, but we made that more explicit, just to make it clear that that is how it would be administered. It is not, at this time, clear how much, even an estimate of how much a program like that might cost or what the anticipated demand would be. I'm trying to get answers this week so that we can at least have that before us when we finally consider this ordinance. But that's just the quick update on kind of how that, that mitigation fund would work. I'm happy to answer any additional questions folks have over the course of the next week if they want to come by and talk about the amendment. But that is, that's my update on the mitigation fund, and I don't have anything else to share this morning.
Great. Thank you for that update. Follow-up? Okay.
Just very quickly, yeah, I appreciate Councilmember Lewis mentioning the committee meeting that has been specially scheduled so that we can finish the work on the Tiny House Village bill, and appreciate President Mosquita, you know, urging a sort of a specific deadline for the amendments. In addition to central staff having time to work, it's, I think it's important also that Tiny House Village advocates who've been working on this bill also get a chance to see the amendments well in advance, and so that we can come to the discussion on February 20th, fully prepared.
Wonderful. Thank you. Hello and welcome.
Hi.
Looking forward to hearing from you, Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you. On today's city council agenda, there are no items from the Transportation and Utilities Committee. This week, I am chairing the Transportation and Utilities Committee as scheduled, this Wednesday, February 5 at 9:30 a.m. here in city council chambers. In a previous committee, we heard overviews from the Seattle Department of Transportation, Seattle City Light, and Seattle Public Utilities. So, this week, we'll hear from the fourth department in that committee, in Seattle Information Technology. Regarding the Move Seattle transportation levy, we have both an appointment to the Oversight Committee, as well as a presentation on Move Seattle. And finally, we'll hear from Seattle City Light about their climate adaptation plan. In District 4 last week, I had the pleasure of meeting with the Dean of the Evans School of Public Policy and Governance, University of Washington, is obviously in District 4. I also met with small neighborhood businesses to hear their concerns about the cumulative impact of different regulations and policies that they've been struggling with to stay afloat. And in District 4 this week, I'll join some of the new city council members, maybe all the new city council members, to be interviewed on the Seattle Channel show Civic Cocktail. I believe that episode will be airing Thursday night. And office hours in the district, each week, I spend Friday afternoon in District 4, meeting with constituents for what we call Fridays in 4, and you can sign up on my website for those office hours. Thank you.
Sounds great. Thank you. Councilmember Morales?
Thank you. Welcome back.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you. We, well, first of all, I do want to echo previous comments and solidarity for SEIU. Our staff was out there on Tuesday and were glad to see so many people out, standing up for their rights. And I have to say that this weekend, as I was having coffee with a friend, I learned about some nurses being physically escorted out of the hospital as they were trying to return to work on Friday. So, we know that retaliation exists and that we shouldn't be tolerating it. Regarding my Community Economic Development Committee, I just want to remind folks that we had our first meeting last week and one of the, two weeks ago, and talked about sort of the tone that we want to set for the committee this year is to talk about how we build community wealth. So, we'll be talking a lot about how we support our small businesses better and make sure they don't get pushed out of the city, how we can increase community ownership of land so that our low-income families, whether they're renters or homeowners, have better tools available to help them stay in the city. We are having a special meeting this week, Thursday, from 5 to 7. And at our first meeting, we heard from the departments in the committee. This week, we'll be hearing from artists, small business owners, and folks who are participating in the Equitable Development Initiative, or who have tried to improve their opportunity for creating ownership in our, in our communities, to hear about what's working and what the city might do differently to get out of their way in, in helping build community wealth. So, that's going to be Thursday from 5 to 7. We did have our first office hours on Friday on Beacon Hill. We met with nine constituents who signed up via our website to, to come speak with us. And then we walked around the neighborhood and got to meet some of the local businesses on Beacon Hill and heard from them about what's working and not working. Our next district hours will be this Friday from 10 to 12 at Cafe Red at the Othello Light Rail Station, so please sign up if anybody's interested. And then we'll also be doing a tour of the businesses in Hillman City. We attended on Friday evening, you may have heard about the community safety meeting that was organized by residents of New Holly and Rainier Vista in my district. So, we had, I think, at least 250 people turn up at this community meeting to, to hear, not to hear from elected leaders, but to have us listen to their needs in the community. So, it was myself and County Councilmember Zahalai, there were representatives from the Seattle Police Department, from the school board, and several others. I think for me, the big takeaway was that our young people need help. They need resources. They need more after-school programming, extended community center hours, park programming, you know, after school and summertime. They need late-night opportunities to have things to do, and our young adults need better job opportunities, paid apprenticeship programs, so that we actually provide something for these young people to do and for their families to guide them toward. The other thing we did hear loud and clear was that there is a need for more coordination of the initiatives that we have and a need for, and an interest in moving toward restorative justice principles as we think about what our response to public safety issues should be. My staff also attended the Seattle Greenways celebration for their volunteers, and the, the message from that community is that we need to make sure that we have safe sidewalks and safe routes to school and safe infrastructure for folks who, whether they walk, roll, or bike to, to work, to school, to the things that they need to do in their community. This is about safety for everyone and making sure that we have the infrastructure in place for folks who don't drive, for whatever reason. It's also about making sure that we are creating the infrastructure we need for clean transportation alternatives, because we know that 50, 60% of our greenhouse gas emissions in the city come from passenger vehicles, and we are not going to solve that problem unless we have good, good choices, alternative choices for people to get around. So, I, I wasn't able to make that because I was at the public safety meeting, but my staff did go and wanted to share that message. And I believe that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Councilmember Strauss.
Good morning and welcome back. We're very excited to have you. There are zero items on the Land Use and Neighborhoods Committee on today's agenda or on the Introduction and Referral Calendar. Next, Land Use and Neighborhoods Committee will be meeting on Wednesday, February 12th. There are three items, a presentation from SDCI in response to last year's tree resolution, which was due to council last Friday. I have been reassured that we will be receiving it today. There will also be a clerk file 314434, which is a contract rezon of 4,600 Union Bay Place, and the reappointment of Director Nathan Torgelson. My staff has distributed questions for his reappointment confirmation, and please feel free to add to that. Upcoming events, tonight, I will be joining the 43rd District Environmental Caucus. On Wednesday, I will be joining with Civic Cocktails. Thursday, the Growth Management Policy Board, and likely a Finney Ridge walking tour this week. Last week, my staff attended the Groundswell Northwest meeting. We will likely be attending the Finney Neighborhood Meeting, even though it's in conflict with another, there's just too much to do, I swear. Last week, we also saw the Ballard Inner Bay Regional Corridor Work Group present in Ballard, and while this is very important for state funds, because it is the third-most used north-south corridor, behind I-5 and SR-99, this weekend, we found the importance of the Ballard Inner Bay Corridor, when the Fremont Bridge was stuck open for some time, and I know recently, the Ballard Bridge has been stuck open for some time. And it's very interesting that in a city with so many bridges, we don't actually have a dedicated Bridge Maintenance and Operations Fund here in our city. And so, these are things that we need to pay attention to and continue to study, and why not only is this infrastructure important from top down, from the state down to the city, it is also important from the local neighborhoods up to the city. I also attended the Ballard Landmark Community last week and had a great conversation. More things that happened last week, I was down in Olympia for Association of Washington Cities, a role on their Board of Directors. I had the opportunity to do a ride-along with Seattle Police Department Officer Garcia. I attended Roll Call and spoke with the lieutenant and the captain and all of the officers there at Roll Call. We've got some really great officers working that beat. I had a wonderful time working with Brian and Garth and Dane and Officer Garcia. It was just a really, you know, every, I've been in this community my entire life. I've walked these neighborhoods. I've participated in community in so many different ways, and I must say that it is a different experience when you are walking with a uniformed officer. There's a different experience. There's a different request. There's a different expectation, and what I've noticed is that the majority of the calls that we responded to were social services or social work-related. There was only one traffic collision that we attended that was not, you know, somehow enveloped in how our city responds to the social needs of our, of our community. And what I also noticed is that we don't have the resources for these people in our community. We don't have a dedicated way or a centralized way of responding, and that puts officers in a really awkward place, and it's not their fault. It is our responsibility to provide the social and behavioral services that our community needs. Moving on, we had a great constituent meetings in the district as well, meeting with the Ballard P-Patch, local business owners, experts on the tree resolution. Ballard Pea Patch, local business owners, experts on the tree resolution. And thank you, Councilmember Swann, on your ability to move, willingness to move winter evictions to another date. I will also be bringing some amendments to your office to work with you there. Also, very concerned that the Ballard ER was closed last week. We could have had a signed contract and that important public service remain open. I also had the ability and the honor to stand with Deborah and Jed last week in honor of their son, Gabe, who passed away this last September, with the mayor's announcement that there will be more education and substance misuse awareness and resources being used throughout the city. As I continue my conversations throughout District 6, I will be sharing the message of Gabe's life and what we can be doing to turn that tragedy into a triumph. Finally, I will be bringing a proclamation today to council. My apologies for the late notice. February crept up on me, as it may have crept up on you. This Friday is International Clash Day. And in particular, this year, we are focusing on climate crisis. So I will be bringing a proclamation in support of International Clash Day, February 7th, which was started here in Seattle by our local KEXP. That... I know I have more. I'll save it for another time. Thank you so much.
Wonderful. Thank you, Councilmember Strauss. Councilmember Morales?
I forgot one thing. You mentioned climate action. Tomorrow evening, Councilmember Strauss and I will be attending the Jewish Climate Action Festival, along with Matt Remley, who is a climate action activist here in the city. So we look forward to sharing our thoughts about that. For those of you who don't know, this weekend begins Tu Bishvat, which some call the Jewish Arbor Day. It is a celebration where we plant trees, and the whole point is about, well, regenerative nature and needing to make sure that we are protecting the earth.
Wonderful. Just double-checking on process, Councilmember Strauss, the proclamation that you're talking about, do we need to sign that? Will that be circulated to our office, or is that one without a signature?
In coordination with OPMA laws, I'll be circulating it at full council today.
Full council instead of this one?
Because today is not International Clash Day, I do not believe that we will have a presentation.
Got you. Okay. Wonderful. Well, thank you. Looking forward to that. Colleagues, it's really great to see all of you in this role. Excited to be back. And given our new committee makeup, I will be seeing a lot of you in our various committee meetings coming up. Today's full council agenda will start at 2:00 p.m. today. And with that, we are adjourning our council briefing one minute early. I'll see you all at 2:00 p.m. Today's full council briefing is adjourned. Thank you.